Mr. Sherfres.
Here.
Christopher Smith.
Yeah.
Kenneth Mark.
Here.
Dallas Smith.
Yeah.
Ingrid Holmes.
Here.
Jerry LaBeau.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Rhames Smith, would you please?
Father God, we ask that you conduct this meeting tonight. Lead us in the right direction. Father, we just thank you again for this day. In the mighty name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes of our August 5th board meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, we approve the minutes.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of the August 5th board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Petitions and communications, are there any presentations, Mr. Baptiste? Communications?
Yes, Madam Chairman. We would like to have a safe date. Tuesday, September 21st, 8:00 AM. Five hours, it's going to change around. A regional park is updated. I'm going to be here. Mayor, so in the past, if you guys wish to attend, you guys get with Joanie. Joanie could...
Can't have a table, huh? We just...
Yeah, I want a table, you get a table, but we have... We have no... We need to be able to... Whatever you want.
At the last chamber event, we did have a table, but I think it was because we had... That's what I was about to say. Because it was the annual meeting. And so typically, we've not purchased a table. However, a table is $300. Okay, so at this time, if you would, just call Joanie and tell her that you're interested in attending the breakfast, and she'll take care of it. There being no speakers, unfinished business, we'll move to the non-consent agenda items. Number one, to discuss for possible consideration approving the purchase of an additional .4 acres of land, bringing the total acreage to 2.4 acres of land at the Spur 93 Business Park for B and BIs.
Yes, Madam Chairman. At your last board meeting, you guys approved the purchase of two acres of land in the Spur 93 Business Park, the B and BIs. When we went out there and actually did the survey, it was 2.45 acres of land. And there was some discussion about giving the guy an incentive for the .45 acres, but he chose to just purchase the whole thing outright at the $57.5 per acre. So it is no incentive. We're just selling an additional .45 acres of land to B and BIs.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve the additional sale?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the additional .4 acres of land for the sale of the property, Spur 93 Business Park, to B and BIs. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, to discuss for possible consideration a letter of intent from the King Crawfish Distributors LLC.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, you guys have a letter of intent from the King Crawfish Distributor LLC. Looked at their pre-application, their... Any ISC code does meet you guys' guideline. We do have the principal here, if you guys want to hear from him, but this is strictly a letter of intent. If you guys want to move forward with the application, you can move forward, whatever you all wish to do.
Just to define a letter of intent again, a letter of intent is for us to approve you all moving forward to get additional information about the company.
That's correct. As I said earlier, Madam Chairman, I do have the principal here. If you guys have any questions of the principal from his letter of intent, I would hope that he would feel free to answer it, if y'all have any.
If he'd like to make any comments as well, we certainly would welcome that. Anyone have any questions for him?
I was wondering where...
Sir, would you join us at the podium, please? Thank you.
I was wondering where you was operating out of now.
So I just purchased a property, 3149 Gulfway Drive, it's on the corner.
Right.
And it is a pretty big building. And I have a plan to start on make the distribution from there. I own the King Crawfish Shack Restaurant, too, where I used to do the distribution from there, but now it's kind of small. It's kind of... It's kind of small about the growing of the business. So now, I just purchase a property to keep growing. Yes, sir.
Sir, if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Javier Barajas.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May we have a motion on number two?
So moved.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number three, to discuss for possible consideration approving the first renewal of the Security Guard Services to serve the Spur 93 Business Park with SNS Investigations and Security, Inc., expiring December 17, 2019?
Right. Madam Chairman, you guys entered into an agreement with SNS Security Services last fiscal year. They have a two-one-year option for renewal. We are recommending that you guys renew it for one, the first renewal. We are very satisfied with the service that they are providing.
That cost is?
Ma'am.
The renewal cost is? Ninety-six thousand... Ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Yes, ma'am. And they provide service five days a week and 24 hours on weekend. Saturday and Sunday, they're there for 24 hours. Every day, they're there for 12 hours. Sir? This was last year's agreement. It was ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. And you're renewing it at the same...
Any questions, sir?
Where are they located at, Mr. Baptiste? Their office?
I think this is a Grove's company. I'm not... I'm almost sure they are Grove's company.
For the purpose of those that weren't on the board at the time, Mr. Baptiste, would you explain just a little bit about what the company does for us?
Well, what they do, they ride around at night around the business park, make sure that all the businesses that we have out there is protected. They have a swan. They actually... We know where they are at certain times of the day, because they give us a log of...
Swiping.
Swiping by each business. So we know they're moving around, but they're there to protect our clients and make sure nothing go wrong in that park. You know, if something happened in that park, they certainly have notified me several times, you know? So we are very, very pleased with those guys.
How long have we had them?
This guy, I think this is their second renewal.
Okay.
We had them three years before, and then we came back and we renewed them again for three additional years. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
One, I was going to ask you, we get hit with the cost to protect our park, but other companies.
Yes, sir.
Could they help us with the bill?
Well, what we do, each company out there, we charge an assessment fee for the service we provide. It's $500 per acre. So if you have 10 acres, you have to pay $5,000 every year toward those costs that we incur.
And you put it towards this?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Move that we approve the contract for another year.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number four, to discuss for possible consideration the Greater Port Arthur Chamber of Commerce lease agreement for 501 Procter.
Let me pass this out. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, five years ago, we entered into a lease agreement with the... Greater Port Arthur Chamber of Commerce to be attended in this building. At that time, they were located... Let me go back, because all you guys are pretty new. When this board was planning the construction and the rehab of this building, this board thought it was very important that we had the Chamber as a partner in this building with us. So we went out, and we talked to the Chamber Executive Board, and they agreed to come in to be a partner with us downtown Port Arthur. At that time, it was in the Community Bank Building on Twin City, and the agreement that this board had with the Chamber was, look, we want you guys, we think it's important that you guys come downtown with us, because it was nothing down here, you know? And the board agreed to... The rent that they were paying at Community Bank at that time, five years ago, that is the agreement that this board chose to accept here. Plus, we also bought all their furniture. So all the furniture you see in the Chamber, it was important to this board that we have a partnership between us and EDC and the Chamber. All the furniture, the bill out, we paid for all that for them, just for their presence in here, and I think it was a good decision on behalf of that board. The agreement was for five years. That five years is, I think it's going to come up the end of August of this year. We passed August, right? Yep. But what I am recommending, the currently leased 2,234... 32 square foot at $1.10 per square foot, which they're paying us $2,455.20 monthly. I'm actually... I'm recommending, rather, three cents per square foot to raise their rent to $1.13 per square foot and make their new rental payment $2,522.16. But that's just my recommendation. You guys go where you all wish to. They are a great partner.
Questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Where'd you get the three cents from?
Is that marketing rate? It's a number.
It's just a number, okay.
Is it comparable to the other?
Well, this is our first renewal, lease renewal, and most of them are paying around $1.10 per square foot, I think, three cent. The Chamber is a nonprofit organization, and they're excellent partner. We work real well together, and, you know, we certainly like to... You know, it's up to the board.
I'll make a statement about that. I rent property, and, you know, there's no taxes on this building, because we're basically not taxed either, so they don't pay any taxes either, because they're nonprofit. But $1.10 is probably for down here and upstairs, you know, not a storefront, it's probably pretty reasonable. Probably not... It's probably a good rent, and to have them here, like you said, is kind of a wonderful thing to have the Chamber. I can't believe you got them down here, to tell you the honest truth.
Yeah, totally.
Because they're kind of... Way back then, they were kind of hid way down here, you know? And so it's a wonderful thing, but I think $1.10 is... Or $1.13, whatever you come up with, is a pretty reasonable number, just considering what property goes far out on 365. That's a pretty good rent. I can't get any more, much more than that myself, and I have prime property out there, so that's a good price.
I still believe that the partnership is still very important. The increase is small, but I think an increase is always necessary, just as you step and move forward with costs we may incur moving forward. But to keep the partnership, that's great. I know we did take some steps a few months ago to do some things, you know, concerning the Chamber of Commerce, you know? So I would believe that this would be perfectly fine if they were in agreeance with it. We just don't want to rock that boat. So if you're looking for a motion, I can give it to you.
I am. I think the increase is certainly nominal. I mean, you know, three cents. $66. I mean, I was just saying, we want an increase, because we're looking to look at our other businesses when they start to renew. And I think this is a good start, because like you said, they are a nonprofit, and so may I have that motion, please? Okay, it's been moved in second to approve agenda item number four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Down.
The staff just talked about a couple of months ago.
Yes, sir, they made the changes at their own cost.
Agenda item number five, to discuss for possible consideration rescinding Resolution 19360 with Classic Forms for newsletter publication.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'm going to ask you not to come deal with this one.
Good evening. As you all know, I think it was about a month ago, I came before the board, and you guys agreed to go with Classic Forms. There was a misunderstanding, and Classic Forms actually sent an email, and we actually had dialogue with her, and I talked with the purchasing manager across the street. And because I actually have the documentation, he stated that it's okay for us to move forward with another possible contender, which would be probably the second person that's in line. So that's what we have going on right now.
And you may want to explain what... That the bid was ended... Would end up being higher.
Yes, so pretty much what happened is, at the last meeting, the July meeting, you guys actually received a bid tabulation, which awarded Classic Forms as the actual lowest bidder, and I was told that I had to go with the lowest bidder. But once she and I actually got on the phone and we actually talked, she forgot some information, although it was mentioned in the actual quote that I sent out to all of the contenders. So with that being said, she did acknowledge that it was a misunderstanding, and so I'm asking that we look at the next person in line.
Misunderstanding was regarding...
The postage.
Okay, okay.
What we questioned.
Yes, yeah.
What would this... What's this going to do, since the city's already approved this? The council, rather?
From what I'm being told, I actually got on the phone with Cliff Williams, who is the purchasing manager, and he stated that pretty much I need a resolution to counsel with Classic Forms, and then also, tonight, I guess you guys would approve the next lowest bid, and then we'll have to go back to counsel like that.
We hold this, then? If we're going to approve the next lowest bid, we might need to hold this item until the attorney gets here, because I don't think we listed to approve the next lowest bid on the agenda. And so since it's not on the agenda, I don't know if we'll be able to discuss that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the actual next... It's the next item, right? Yes, number six.
Renata, on this here...
To discuss for...
Let's say...
Higher, which doesn't say the same thing.
However, we go to the next lowest, or whatever, however it's going to be, and then we go back to the city council, that's the procedure, and then they'll vote to okay it, and then... So and then we'll just go to them and mail it out? Is the letter ready and everything to just go? So it's not going to put us off for two weeks or something, right?
Well, actually, actually, normally when I do the newsletter, I have a timeline, and so I actually work with the company, I actually work with the vendor, and we go from there. My next step is, I have talked with our employment and training specialists to get the pictures from what we've been doing here, so that I can include in the newsletter. And then also, normally, I sit down with Mr. Baptiste, and we decide exactly what are the pertinent things that we're going to talk about for this year, or what we've done throughout the year.
So it's not ready to go yet?
No, I've been working on some things, but not everything is completed.
Okay. But that won't throw us off that much?
No, it'll be produced this year.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number five, which means rescinding Resolution 19360 to Classic Forms for the newspaper publication. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Mr. Baptiste.
Madam Chairman, the guy says he's in the parking lot, so if you guys...
All right.
I have one more question, since we're not going to really do anything tonight with this. Would Classic come back and bid on the postage?
Oh, sorry.
They won't, okay.
They don't want to do the bid? Yeah, she... It's... Yeah, it's done, yeah. Okay.
Just a thought.
With that being said, I guess we can move to...
On the next lowest bid, they're going to... Bid is still good?
Actually, yes. We actually have the documentation actually in your packets, and actually, I actually have an updated quote dated for September 6, and it actually gives you a breakdown of a newsletter with 20... Of 24,000 newsletters and a quantity with 18,500. And Mr. Baptiste and I had to sit down prior to a while back, and we decided that we were going to go with the 24,000, which is what we've always done in the past. And so this is the updated quote from the next lowest bidder. It's on the bid tabulation, but you guys also have this in your packet as well, which is the updated quote.
I hate to ask another question.
It's the third page of the document that you have.
But on there, Renata, it says estimate good for 30 days. Is that going to mess us up?
Oh, sir, because once we lock it in, once everything is done, once they approve it, then of course, we're going to pay the fee upfront. The total fee is going to be paid upfront.
So we'll pay for it, and then as you're working on it, then you'll send the information. But the cost will be locked in once we sign it, if that's what you're saying?
Correct.
At that $16,248?
Yes, sir.
Now, he can take care of this?
No, I was... Just a second. All right, may I have a motion, please?
He can take care of this now?
Guy, I think the question was, Ms. Holmes asked, was we on number six? Can we just go to the second bidder?
It's I understand that the first bidder has declined to accept the engagement. There's no... Or is there was no fee, no bid bond or anything to bind the contract? As I understand it, there's apparently some misunderstanding about what their $1,690 line item for the mail was supposed to include. So they declined to...
I don't want to speak on behalf of the City of Port Arthur Procurement Department, but typically, if a bidder is unable to meet a bidding responsibility, they would... You would be allowed to move to the next low bidder. And I'm not familiar with Classic, but I... We have done work for other clients with both Kirksey and the Mailroom, and have good... I haven't had no problems with working history with either one of those firms. So I think it's a pleasure of the board, if y'all want to do that, or would ask the city to go out and rebid the project. But the other two entities' bids were somewhat...
Any reason when they submitted, from Kirksey submitted this, they just submitted two different bids for us and put it on the same sheet and added it up?
Actually, yeah, that's what they did. Basically, they submitted one with a quantity of 18,500 and one with a quantity of 24,000. And like I said before, Mr. Baptiste and I, we decided to go with what we've done in the past, which is a 24,000 quantity. So the total cost is here. I talked with them, and just totaled it up like that, but basically, the total cost is $16,240... Excuse me, $16,240.80, which is what I have on the bid tabulation that was submitted.
Right, I saw that. I was just concerned that they added them up on the...
Yeah.
I knew what they did, but I was concerned that they didn't do it separately, so that it was clear what they were doing, because that's two different concerns, and that was my hesitation.
So for the record, we should clearly state that we're approving the quote for $16,240.80.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
It's on record.
Thank you.
Ms. Holmes, on this, or Renata, on these... This company, this new company, or the second bid company, we have two different quotes, two different months, 7/16 and 9/6. How did that happen?
Pretty much, it's the same thing. As I stated before, at the last meeting in July, you guys were given a bid tabulation, and it had the documents behind it, but what happened is, they actually updated their quote to reflect the same cost, but it's a newer quote, because the quote that you're looking at was only good for 30 days.
Okay, okay.
Sure, it's the same.
It's the same, but she just...
It's the same amount.
Yeah.
It's the same dollar amount. That's what I was saying, that on their second bid sheet, they added them together, which made it look like it was an additional amount, yeah. But it's 16,240.
Okay, so if they did this, they knowing 30 days is good, so here we talking 9/6, which is just the other day. So if we don't get the newsletter out in 30 days, then they'll have to do another one?
No.
No.
Basically, it's a one-time payment, and it's... They're going to be working directly with myself.
Okay.
So what... I think what your question is, if our newsletter is not complete in 30 days, will they have to come back out for... No.
Okay.
That's what she's saying. No, they won't.
Okay.
They will work with the cost that we've... They've agreed to at this point.
Okay.
If we had not... If we had not gone to counsel with this and not voted on and left it alone, then yes, they may change their bid. It's what I... It's my understanding.
Is that right? Yeah, I talked with the... I actually called and spoke with the guy that's over it personally, and the lady that actually helped us last time, because they actually produced our last newsletter.
Right.
And so there... It's fine. It's solid.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes, sir?
Let me ask Guy, just... The tabulation sheet dated is dated the fifth, but the new invoice is... new invoice is dated after that date. Would that create some issue?
No, I, I would assume that the, either the EDC or the city purchasing department is gonna require them to send an acknowledgement back of the acceptance of the bid proposal based upon their presentation of the amended, and I think they did the restated one in order to make sure that we had opportunity to address it within a 30-day period. So I think we just wanna make sure that it's clear that Kirksey is asked to respond, and probably also for the benefit, just give a little timetable about when they think the, the newsletters would go out based upon this procurement, but, and I, and I took kinda differently, I guess the, what I saw was in that, it looked like they were taking a takeoff number, not from what y'all had done before, but a takeoff number from the, it's P.A., I assume was the city, and the other one was the school. So I think, apparently they're doing this, or something similar for other entities here locally.
I think the one thing that would, that Renata will ensure that happens, I mean, she said that they will provide for us another quote with just the one quote that we've agreed to approve, and that's the 24,000.
You could ask them to simply clarify, and resubmit just the, just the quotation and acknowledgement for the 24,000 units that you all have requested, rather than the lower number that they bid based, I guess, on other entities.
Yeah, yeah. All right, now that we've truly discussed the newsletter cost, may I have a motion? Number six. Number six.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve awarding the bid for the annual newsletter to the second highest bidder, which is Kirksey.
Sprint Printing.
Kirksey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, to discuss for possible consideration awarding a bid for contractor service for buildout of second-floor lease space of 501 Proctor Street. Mr. Baptiste.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we solicited three general contractors for the buildout of the space on the second floor. In your package, you have two of them. The third one declined at the last moment, so I only have two bids for you guys. Those bids, Commissioner, you had construction management of Southeast Texas and Southeast Texas Facility and Maintenance. You guys see the two bids? I did speak to Southeast Texas Facility Maintenance, because we did ask about the, the ceiling tiles in the hallway, that is included in this bid. If you can see, there's a big difference between the two bids of, you know, I think the difference is that Southeast Texas Facility Maintenance have done work in this building before, they know what type of windows, what type of doors, they know what it costs, and the other guy, the other guy was speculating. So we would recommend Southeast Texas Facility Maintenance.
They do the second-floor renovate?
Yes, ma'am.
Before?
And I, I think that's why their bid came in the way it came in, because then, you know, they knew what type, the ceiling tiles cost, they knew what the, the doors and the windows and all this other stuff cost, where the other guy was speculating, you know, trying to protect himself. But we recommend Southeast Texas Facility and Maintenance.
They're a very good company, and we've worked with Mr. Rivers on several projects, but Mr. Cardenas is also a very qualified Port Arthur contractor, and we've had an opportunity, Kate and I, to work with him on other projects, so both of those, I think, are very well-qualified companies to do the work. It does appear, though, Mr. Rivers has a more competitive bid.
It's a quick question. I'm just now looking at this, and looking at Southeast Texas bid, and there are a number of exclusions, proposal exclusions. We're talking, if you, if you look at the, right above the spreadsheet. How, with those exclusions, all those things are gonna actually have to be done, right?
Sure.
And, and so that's gonna be additional costs?
Well, let me, no, no, these, these will not be done.
I think, I think it's an excellent point, let's walk through them. Sales taxes, they're anticipating that this is a tax-exempt entity, so we would provide them with a tax exemption certificate. I don't think this is a critical project that would require overtime work, and as far as windstorm inspections, again, as far as I understand, this is all gonna be interior work that would not have to be wind-loaded. But again, I'm, I'm, we don't have architectural studio here, but I'm, just based on what appeared, as far as the exterior finishes, that was the only one that I wasn't sure about, Floyd, the, as far as, again, from what we understood, the specifications were roofing, landscaping, parking, private cabling, sort of any technology items were not anticipated to be part of the, the project. Now, I don't know, Floyd, if there is any expectation from the tenant on the second-floor amount of that, and I really couldn't tell from the bid of construction managers that that would have been included in the proposal in any event. So it appeared to us that there weren't, there's already some treatment on the windows. I didn't think that, I didn't know that they were changing anything there. And the other thing is the withholding of 10% retainage. I, I think that's something you'll have to talk to him about, because I did, don't know that we've ever agreed to waive retainage on one of these projects. But other than that, Mr. Marks, at least generally speaking, we didn't see those exclusions as being a major issue, besides the one on the exterior finish, and I'll let Mr. Baptiste discuss that, if y'all decide to go with Mr. Rivers and CTEC.
And, and I have been on the phone, because I wanted to make sure that I was dealing with two apples and apples with the two bids, and the difference was really the corridors and the lighting. He said that is within his bid, and he's gonna live by this amount.
Any other questions? Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the, we're at, the awarding the bid for contractor services for the buildout of the second-floor lease space to S.E. Texas Facilities and Maintenance for $185,000.
May I have a second? It's been moved in second to approve awarding the bid to CTEC Facilities and Maintenance. All those for the second-floor lease space, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, to discuss for possible consideration providing EDC additional funding for the retrofit of 549 Fourth Street.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, you guys, 549 Fourth Street is the Port Arthur News Building. We have been in the building now for several months, we've had the remediation done. If you guys pass by, the panels are off, we have a better understanding of what's in that building, a much, a much better understanding than we did when, prior to. When we originally made application for the EDA application, the grant application, we, 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 we estimated about $5 million, a $6 million project, not knowing a lot. But once we got in that building and started cleaning it up and doing some demolition, a third, we found that a third of the building is made of wood, real rotten wood, it's, it's real bad, and, and thanks God, did speak to God the other day, and I spoke to the fire marshal, it'd have to be replaced. That wood have to be replaced.
I had mentioned to Floyd that we just, was there an option for enhanced, I mean, you know, structural supporting and then enhance fire safety, you know, stand piping, additional fire exits, something that might lead to a lesser cost than what this number appears here? That's the reason for this conversation.
But the city, the city building code requires that, that code required that any commercial building must be metal, it cannot be, and that wood was in, I, I have some pictures in the, the office on it. But anyway, once we start, we found that out, we, we got the contractor to go in there, and contractor gave us an estimate of what it's gonna cost us to rehab that building, because a third of the building has to be taken out and re-put back, you know? We came up with about, I think it's first with 10% of the drawing, I think it is with about $9,200,000, you know? Then we said, hold up, Guy, let's do a little more drawing. We went back to him with, with 30%, and I think it came down to a little over $8 million. We feel that with 50% drawing, that, that number gonna come down. What I'm asking you guys, if you wanna move forward, this building is gonna, gonna cost us some additional money, about $1.5, $1.6 million. And I think, I would feel very comfortable that that's gonna, that the guaranteed maximum price gonna fall within those numbers. The other thing is, we have, I have made, I have gone out and looked for a new market tax credit, thought I had it. In fact, some friend's guy introduced me to, in Beaumont. Remember the guys from Mississippi? Thought we had it, but then we went back to EDA, doesn't match. It doesn't work well. New market does not work well with, 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 with federal dollars, with federal EDA dollars. I did engage a friend of mine, an architect from Austin, a historical guy. He is currently trying to put in a historical district for this area, and we did include this building, Port Arthur News Building, in the historical district if THC approves it. THC have been down here, but nothing had been finalized. We feel that if THC does accept our building, we will get some return. But as of now, and the reason why I'm coming to you guys now is because the council meet tomorrow, and is very likely that the council will approve the budget for the fiscal year 1920. I did submit the additional funds within our new-year budget, and I'm gonna ask you guys to approve amending your budget for next year, because those additional funds is in there. If this board choose not to move forward with the project, that's fine. The money could still be in the budget, we just don't use it, you know? So it's still up to you guys what y'all wanna do, you know? Hope I covered most of it. Yes, ma'am?
Think that this is an amazing project. I think it's a great project. I think an additional $1.7 million deserves some discussion. I think it's a lot for us to make a decision on $1.7 million tonight, not so much in the budget, because you're right, if that's what happens, that's what happens. But that's just my thought, you know, that I think we need to look at the project, see the benefits of the project for us, and what that means, and really come together as a board and look at and see if that really makes sense for us. Should somebody else now be assisting us with this project, you know, because of what we're doing, and who, who's investing in this project with us? But that's just my thought. Anyone else?
I, I have a question, two questions. One is, how much would we end up having invested of our money in the bill and counting the grant? And then, what, what would it, what would happen if we said no? I mean, what would happen? The project would just be in limbo?
First question, you guys would have about $2.6 million invested in the project. If we said no, then we, we have not invoiced EDA on any cost as of now, we would just lose the grant money.
Right. Which would be a horrible thing, 4.7 or what, what was the grant? How much was the grant?
4.7 million.
4.7 million. Yeah, our total investment with the grant and with us adding this extra money would be about $2 million and some odd dollars, which would be really, I mean, on today's scale, that's, that's not much money for a building like that, especially if we're really looking at some income and part of this downtown preservation, just with those two, the income that that building hopefully will generate, and the downtown preservation of preserving another historic building, you know, I think it's a small investment myself, but that's, that's just me talking.
I think it's a small investment now. I think you don't, we don't know, we thought it was a small investment before we said we needed another $1.7 million, and I think we just need to, in my opinion, we just need to ask those questions before we move forward on that, 'cause it could be another $1.7 million. My other question is, Mr. Baptiste, I know that our emergency management department is being considered to move there. What, what financial investment will the city have in that?
They will be paying lease space.
Lease space, okay.
Yes, ma'am. They will be paying lease space to us, Lamar will be paying lease space to us, and there is several office-like in this building that will be, that's how we recoup our money.
And as I understood it, for the city portion, to the extent that they had to, and I'm not saying they have to, but to the extent they would have to harden or enhance the structural components of the building, that's on their cost, that's not part of the project. So provide, it's providing them space as a tenant that would be available for others, it's not providing them an enhanced space that they may require for that operations center for any changes in the facility otherwise. But, so there, there was very possible that the city might have some investment. But I agree with you, I think, and again, we had a wonderful end result with this building. I do wanna remind everyone, for those who were not, had the privilege of serving at that point, is that we had a guaranteed maximum price contract, but kinda like what you just saw with CTEC's on some exclusions, every one of these contracts is written with a couple of exclusions, even a CMA, so, how do I say this? I, I, on the agenda call, I discouraged us from just carte blanche adding to the professional service contract with the engineers, because at this point, we don't know what if you're gonna go forward with the building or not. That being said, some portion of the fee may need to be enhanced, because as plans are developed, and Floyd's talking about the costs coming down, you're going to get a better number of, at some point, I think, the board really needs to know what that number is, what that C, what is CTEC's willing to sign a CMA amount? And where is that? And where is that point going to be? And that's the decision point where you need to decide what, what you want to do, because that, as I say, is the, I understand the difference in 20% drawings, 30% drawings, et cetera. They all refine the project significantly, and I guess what I'm just concerned about, because we, we have not been involved in this at all, is how refined those are to know what the build back's gonna be. I mean, you've got a pretty good demolition cost, disposal cost, build back cost, so I guess I would feel more comfortable if we had a little bit more finite numbers to give the board some advice. And as I understand it, Floyd, that we're not in jeopardy on the 4.7 million dollars on the timetable. You all have a, had a pretty generous timetable, and Ms. Larson told us early on if there's extenuating circumstances, as there always is with rebuilds, that you have the opportunity to request from EDA some performance extensions and still retain the committed funds.
Mike?
We had to make a decision.
I would think you, that it is incumbent upon Mr. Baptiste, our friends at Architectural Studio, me and Kate, to sit down with Ms. Larson and explain to her what happened, but by that time, to at least have developed a preliminary new timetable. So I would say, subject to what the board gives us directive tonight, I don't, I think Mr. Baptiste is right, mend your budget. Give yourself the opportunity to not have to go back and revise the budget if you decide to move forward, but then give us some opportunity to sit down with the architect, C-Tex, and, and look at a good timetable to go reasonably talk to EDA about what you're looking at. Because honestly, with a building of that size and the confined space to, as you, you men are so much more in tune to this, you're demolishing, you know, wood, I mean, it's not like pulling a lot of metal out, but you're still gonna get it all in, out of there. I don't know if that's all treated material, if it's got to be looked at for any kind of special disposal. I'm not saying it does, it probably doesn't, but at the end of the day, someone's gotta look at that. What's it gonna take to dispose of it? Then how structurally do you have to secure the building as you're demolishing and rebuilding? I mean, it's not like you get to go tear all this out and, and then, and, because many of these, as I understand it, are structural components of, of a portion of that building. So it's, and again, y'all are more expert at this than me by far, but I, I see this as an interesting demolish, building, refitting, and how much comfort does the CMA have that he feels comfortable with giving a new number. I mean, he's given a rough number based on the architect number, but we still don't have a CMA number in hand.
Right. And my question would be, when do we see a revised scope of work? I mean, when we're talking about 1.7 million, that means that the scope of work is gonna change, so.
Mrs. H, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Yes, I am a member of the Architect Studio office. The CM, sorry, the guaranteed maximum price is what we're working towards. The scope of work actually hasn't changed. It's, it's broadened to where when we started the project, there was only 60% build out. Excuse me. Now it's over 100%. So the scope of work has increased. That's why the fees have to come up, as well as the construction costs. So that's, that's where we are at this time.
So, not to cut you off.
With the drawings.
Will there be a revised scope of work, since the costs have increased?
No.
And it's expanded, the scope of work has expanded. So will, will we show what additional work's gonna be done or required?
I think, Ken, you may be able to help me better explain. I think where, where, I'm gonna use your term, scope of work change, we have, we have put in there a first-class culinary hospitality training center in that building.
Right.
Top of the line. That's the change.
Maybe, maybe, I'm speaking, I'm speaking from an industrial standpoint. Whenever there, there is a, a change in what we're gonna be doing, we found that the structure was made of wood, so there was additional demolition that has to be done?
There will be, yes.
And additional build out, there's gonna be additional materials required to, to make that structure sound, again, with the metal. I, I'm just asking, what additional?
When the project started, we were not allowed in that building due to the abatement program.
Right.
So it took, and luckily, they were able to complete it in 60 days instead of 90. So we just gained entrance into that building about a month ago.
Okay.
That's when we realized all the wood construction, the deterioration of the wood, deterioration of the roof, and all the effect that that has happened to the building, so. Plus, we've entertained Lamar as a tenant, we've entertained the Economic Operations Center as a tenant.
Right.
Plus the leased kitchen that we planned to, to build out. So it's not that the scope of work has changed, it's just that we have completed the occupancy of that building, that at the beginning, we didn't have. We only had 60%. Maybe Lamar co-op working, but now it's completely occupied.
I think, I think what, I think what he's mentioning is that the scope of work hasn't changed, but the body of work within the scope that they initially talked about
Correct.
has expanded. So it's like it's gotten deeper. It hasn't gotten wider, but it's got deeper. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
So with the additional requirement for 1.7 million to complete the tear out and rebuild of the wooden part, that, that's an expanded?
Let me say this, Commissioner, I'm gonna use layman term, I think it was. Because we couldn't see what, what was there.
Right.
We made an estimate that was too low, because once we got in there, it wasn't, it wasn't what we thought it was. And the change is, the same plan, we're using the same plan, it's just we got to redo the building to get there.
And, and the redo is, and I, I don't want to be the dead horse, but the redo is, is that we found wood in there where we thought there was metal. So there's, there's gotta be the demolition of the wood part and replacing of that wood with either metal or whatever for the structure. So that's what I'm talking about, is that change. There's a change in scope right there.
We still in the same.
Okay, well, maybe I'm using the wrong term, but there is a change.
How you come up with the cost, the additional 1.6 million?
We issued a 10% drawing, as was mentioned earlier, which was schematic design, including all your tenants' requirements and layouts, et cetera. That was then just looked at as a budgetary, or used as a budgetary tool to reach that, and it came back around 9 million, 9.2. Now, through the pre-construction process that we have now going on over there, we will be able to investigate the building further, develop the drawings more in detail, and get a better price for the construction.
Well, that 1.6 million may go up.
No, no, no.
More likely, the intention is to go down. It has already gone down.
What he just said, when we got the contract in there, it was at 9.2, okay? But once the contractor got a better look at the drawings and what needed to be put, placed in it, his number's coming down, and the more defined we get in the drawing, the number gonna come down, because the contractor have to protect himself, because it's gonna be a guaranteed maximum price. Whatever he say, whatever we say we're gonna, we want this building built for, if he say you could, it's his cost. So he's gonna protect himself right now, because he's not seeing all that has to be done right now. Until these guys refine this drawing and give a, a, a full picture of where all the pipes gonna be, or where all the electrical plugs gonna be, where all the outlets gonna be, all that is not there yet. That number gonna go down. I have confidence it's number gonna go down. Eight hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Close to a million dollars.
That's with only, that's with only 20% more drawing.
Just with another two weeks of studying the building and the drawings. So we have another three months that we're looking to develop the drawings to a 30%, to a 50%, and we hope to get him down to a, a GMP he can live with, a guaranteed maximum price, and then we'll sign him up and get on with it. We hope to get it below the 1.7. But we, you can't do that until you finish the, the construction documents and get competitive bidding on it. It will be an open book. The CMAR is an open book. He'll have three different bids on every category of work, and we choose who he wants. It's not, he's already guaran, he's already agreed to his markup.
Okay, make me understand, because the, all you're doing is changing out the wood.
It's a complete structure from ground floor to the roof, yes, two-story.
You take the, let's just say 1.7, that's to remove the wood and rebuild the structure, up to code.
That's the new money piece.
Right.
When we talk about the 1.7.
Correct.
To bring the structure back to where they were gonna design it for the CMA before they recognize.
To meet 2015 building code.
Basically, they assume a, a different, you know, sort of, you know, interior structural support for the building that was already, would be authorized under city code, subject to a few modifications. And that ain't not the case.
We, we have to remove all combustible material from the building and, and build to the 2015 building code, which City of Port Arthur has adopted. And that's also any exterior work to meet the 140 mile an hour wind load certificate.
Just, that's just part of it.
So you are adding, you are adding what Mr. Goodson was talking about.
Yes, ma'am. Complete steel two-story construction
Okay.
of the building, and new roof over the entire building.
Okay. So I guess what my only question is, I know that you're saying that we're going down on the cost?
Yes, ma'am. That's the intention. That's the purpose of the construction documents. Right now, it's just a big guess.
Right, right.
Until we get more detail.
So we're just asking for the 1.7 million dollars just in case? Or is it for something else? If we're going down on the cost, and I, I think this is more Mr. Baptiste's question, if we're going down on the cost, why are you, why are we asking for an addition, additional money?
I think that the project gonna come in at about 7.2. I'm, I, I like to have a little fluff. I'm asking for 7.8, just to make sure I have money. But I think the project gonna come in at 7.2.
We were gonna be asking for this additional money anyway.
Yes, ma'am. Or, or we, what we are planning on is just wait till next fiscal year and get something. But, you know, once we got a contract in there, we want to get it done.
Okay.
I, I, again, I think the project to this board gonna come in at about 7.2.
Okay, so.
I like to have some extra money just in case. I'm asking, I'm looking at about 7.8 project.
So we were gonna, I guess my, my question is, is that I thought we were asking for the additional money because we discovered wood.
No, well.
That's what I thought, but I'm incorrect.
That's just a part of it. What Ken is saying, the building is fully occupied now. And now he have to bill for specs for the, the, the firefighters. He have to bill for specs for the culinary kitchen. He have to bill for specs for the, what you call the other kitchen?
Leased kitchen.
Leased kitchen.
He have to bill for specs for.
I see.
So he's billing for specific bodies now.
Okay.
And we, and we met with, we met with those entities individually, and we, we got their requirements. I mean, we didn't just pull this out of the, out of the sky.
We know the furniture and everything that's gonna be there now.
Culinary kitchens are Cadillacs, and that's what they asked for.
I'm familiar with that, yes.
And there are gonna be two, one bakery, one for culinary. Three classrooms, three teachers, and all the support that it takes to operate a culinary kitchen.
You had a question, Mr.?
Yes. My, my question is this, and this is to Mr. Baptiste, I understand what you're doing.
Sir.
What you're asking us to do is to move the money in advance on our budget so that it gets approved with the city, and we don't have to go back and amend later on? Is that what we're ultimately looking at doing?
It's very possible tomorrow, the council will approve the city budget and EDC budget.
Yeah. You may recall, and, and there is some urgency, and, and we, we, I don't object to the, to the request to do this for the budget, for, for one reason, you don't use it, you just move it back from one line item to another, and the city has to approve a budget before it sets a tax rate. We're in, they probably have another meeting to, to go before they're setting their tax rate, but they all have to be done by a date in the latter part of September for October 1. So your budget chases along with their budget, so I certainly don't mind seeing that we accommodate them at the city, because they, they're in a timeframe that they have to meet to set their budget. And ours being a, a part of that, I, I don't mind you earmark this, but it doesn't mean you're going to spend the money, because you haven't signed a CMA yet with a C-Tex anyway.
Right.
And so I think the agenda item merits consideration, just to earmark the money. If you decide not to go forward with the project, you just want it back to the appropriate line items.
To move the money, but agenda item number eight is
It, it is basically.
Just for a clear understanding of what.
Those two are ahead of item 10, because both of those will require budgetary amendments for you all.
Right, so should we have just?
No, I, I think you could take these up. The only question I had about the Architectural Alliance is that we have money prorated out, I think, at different points, and, and this is a lump sum. They're now raising to $500,000 for three, but the money is earned along as the project progresses. So as long as we understand that at some point, you could just say, whoa, and we don't owe you 500,000, because there's services that have not been performed, I just want to make sure that that's clear with the contractor.
That's correct.
With the architect.
Yes, sir.
That's right. So the, the two items are designed to, to add, what, a little over 2 million dollars to the project? Because one's 1.86, is that right? And one's 200,000.
Together, it's 1.688.
1.68, and the other one is 200,000.
And so when we add this amount, this is it, you won't be asking, coming back to us for anything else?
If Mr. Baptiste's number, and I appreciate that Floyd and our architects say it's going down, but if this number between the architects and the project ekes over another 1.68 million, you're gonna have to go back and amend your budget again. So this is, I think Floyd tell you, he's willing, and everybody's willing to work, because this is a top number. They're gonna have to find a way to get it inside that. So hopefully, that's correct. That's the plan.
Yes.
You're not spending it, yeah.
It's earmarking the money on our budget.
That's correct.
Prior to any decisions being made on the spending, we'll get a list of where the money is going again, so we all know what's going on.
so we all know what's going on.
October, early November, you, this board gonna come back with what we call a, a, uh, CMAR. Maximum price guarantee.
Yeah.
Y'all gonna have to approve that. Y'all gonna know exactly how much y'all gonna spend.
And prior to that.
We will have the drawings completed by the end of September to a thirty percent. And we feel that's, that's getting tighter on the numbers with the contractor. And, and then we will spend the next two months after we get the thirty percent in the building with the general contractor. He will be meeting subcontractors and getting those numbers tighter and tighter as we go along. But we can't develop the drawings for a hundred percent occupancy. Our engineers, our consultants are gonna hit us for that extra money. That's why it can't come out of our fee and that's why we're asking for an increase to the fee to justify the drawings. And the more detail we put on the papers, the documents, the better pricing we're gonna get on the overall project. So, um, we'll have a, first we'll get a, a GMP, guaranteed maximum price. He cannot exceed it. He'll have to eat it if it's, find something he didn't like or doesn't work. But then we go into the CMAR. That way it's an open book from that time on. Anything he does, we can save money, we will do it. We will talk to other people that, that can help us as far as reduce that price. Uh, but I think it's a big plus going in with a hundred percent occupancy. Uh, with the, with Lamar and the economic, I mean, the emergency operations center, they're all fired up about it, so.
I will tell you, Commissioner, we know how many chairs, how many tables, how many, we know everything that's gonna be in that building right now. And those costs is included in all this. See, and that's, when he talk about you're billing for, it's fully occupied now. We have all the costs now. We have furniture, equipment, everything.
I have to say, and I'm done. Moving from the sixty percent to the hundred percent is really what's causing the increase in the, in the pricing is what you're saying ultimately?
Lamar and the city.
Thank you.
We, it's further developing of the construction.
Gentlemen.
I'm sorry.
No, I, it wasn't you. We had several conversations going. I was trying to keep one at a time.
With further development of the construction documents, uh, it just takes more time. And, and our consultants already mentioned that to us too. I, I can't say we've done anything, uh, premature. Uh, we did maybe ask for, uh, money that we thought was adequate further until we were able to get in and investigate further. I mean, there's slabs in, it's a structural building, it's structural sound, but there's areas that we have to repair and, and update with the two thousand fifteen building code. We have no way around it, so.
You're on agenda item number eight. Any other questions about agenda item number eight? Um, may I have a motion, please, to discuss for possible consideration providing EDC additional funding for the retrofit of five forty-nine Fourth Street?
I so moved.
Can we fini, let's finish our motion. It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number eight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, I think.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted you guys to show it. It's one point six two five. That's what I'm asking for. That's the additional funds we're asking for, one point six two five is on your deal here.
Agenda item number nine, to discuss for possible consideration amending the professional service contract with Architect Studio P L L C for five forty-nine Fourth Street. May I have a motion, please?
Just say, we, uh, we might recommend a motion to approve, subject to our review of the amended contract.
You all have heard the motion as restated by our attorney? Although, may I have a motion?
Yeah.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number ten, to discuss for possible consideration approving an amendment to the P A E D C twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. May I have a motion? Second, it's been moved in second to approve amending, um, the P A E D C twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Agenda item number eleven, to discuss for possible consideration rescinding resolution nineteen one sixty, purchase of land in the Spur ninety-three Business Park with K L V Ventures. Mr. Baptiste.
Yes, uh, Madam Chairman, uh, Commissioner, uh, originally, uh, K L V Venture came to us and wanted to purchase five acres of land. We, uh, the lawyers have had a.
Purchase contract.
Purchase agreement. Uh, we, we had Mr., uh, Vernon here. He did never sign the contract. He'd never put up his earnest money. He did come back and he wanted one acre of land. So what we asking you guys to do is to rescind the board action and council action of the purchase of five acres of land.
It was three acres. It was three acres.
Three acres, I'm sorry, she said three.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
May, uh, it's been moved in second to approve agenda item number eleven.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number twelve. Before we move to this agenda item, has Mr. Vernon been notified lately that we are voting on his one acre land purchase?
I tried to make contact with him today, Miss Home. I was not able to get in touch with him today. No, he have not, and not by me.
Okay, it's my recommendation, we vote on this and, um, you know, we don't move forward with, with anything until he has finalized his decision.
Put it on next agenda.
To purchase the one.
You on the table until next one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number thirteen, agenda item number twelve, I'm sorry, will be tabled until the next meeting? Agenda item number thirteen, to discuss for possible consideration rescinding resolution eighteen four thirteen, purchase of Fourth Street property with N D C Housing and Economic Development Corporation.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we've been going back and forth with this one. Um, we, the last move we made was to give the land, get back in agreement with N D C, hoping that we was gonna get the G L O, uh, money. That did not happen, it still have not happened. And, and that, what we asking you guys do is rescind that, that agreement that you made with them.
Have all the involved parties been notified?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have something in writing that they, um, of what?
I could get some, I don't have.
Okay.
I, I just wanna say is, you know, this was a commitment, again, where we, and you all paid us to create a purchase contract, send it, and no more earnest money was ever delivered. So fairly easy that the contract, rescinding this basically just puts a bullet in the head of the purchase contract.
Okay. May I have a motion on agenda item number thirteen?
So moved.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number thirteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen, to discuss for possible consideration approving the sale of property located at Fourth Street between Mobile and Shreveport. Mr. Baptiste.
Yes, Madam Chairman, last week you guys received a letter from a, I think he called himself Foil or, uh, for the purchase of the Fourth Street property. Uh, I, I have communicated with these folks and these folks would, would like to move forward.
Question?
Can, can we bring this in executive session?
Yes, we can. Agenda item number fourteen is moved to executive session. May we move agenda item number fifteen to executive session?
Move on through the next ones if you want to.
Thank you.
The last one involves, uh, municipal officers.
Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen will be moved to executive session. Can we go to reports now, marketing and business recruitment? Reports, I'm sorry.
Good evening, good evening again.
Good evening.
As you all know, um, the newsletter, we're about to break off with that finally. Yes, I'm very excited, a lot of great things going on in our area. Um, just wanted to, uh, also let you guys know that our Q and A sessions have been going very, very well. Uh, Mr. LaBov, he's been at pretty much every last one of them. And I will say, the one that they actually had, uh, in August was very well attended. That one was held at Strong Tower Ministries. We had about thirty-five, forty people to actually come out and show out. And the social media presence was really, really good as well. The one at the library, wasn't able to capture that. We didn't have a lot in attendance, but we had a great opportunity. Kristen George actually had a chance to speak with a couple of people in the community and let them know what's going on and what we actually have to offer here at the EDC. Um, I actually had a meeting on last week with a guy from Arlequie. He was very adamant about meeting with me and, uh, he's trying to get to know people in the community. I, I put him in contact with, uh, the chamber as well as some other people in Beaumont. And I think he's to meet with Judge sometime next week, and that's Jeff Brannick that is. So when things like that start happening, people are looking, they're trying to expand. So if any of you guys wanna look at this particular flyer, I'll have it in my office if you have any questions. Um, also, um, as you guys know, I've been working on the corporate target marketing. And, um, as you know, everybody's busy and we have a lot of things going on, a lot of great things going on out, in our area. And at this time, I'm gonna ask, do we have anybody that's available on the board that, that can actually serve in Mr. Baptiste's place because?
Uh, what Renata's referring to, Mr. Baptiste has a schedule that's unbelievable. He's unable to serve on this committee. And he asked, I think all of you did get an email, that he asked for one of us to serve. Do we have any volunteers to do that?
Didn't see that email.
Yeah, I probably don't have your email.
Yeah, he, Mr. Smith LaBov didn't get it, yeah.
Okay.
I need your email.
But if you'd like to serve, please explain with the committee.
Basically, what we've been doing over the past, I would have to say about the past, Mr. Smith, what, ninety days? If not longer than ninety days?
Twenty days.
Right, so about four months. Basically, what we've been doing is we've been actually trying to go out into the market because what's happening is we have a lot of jobs in our area, but we don't have the human population to fill those jobs. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to go out into like other areas out of Texas. So for example, Michigan, uh, Wisconsin, things of that sort, and try to bring the human population from there here because they have the skill set. And so that's where we are right now. We've actually met with, uh, three firms. Uh, it's been a process. Uh, we, we've completed the tallies. And actually, I got an email today from, uh, Purchasing because they're, they're ready to move forward. And so I actually need someone to, to come in and step in because we need to get the process and the ball rolling because we wanna catch it in a opportune time because of course, you know, right now, people are in school. So if we started now and catch it at the end, they'll have time to move with their families. And when I say move, I'm move here in our area. And so we have a lot of things that we've been working on, like I say, with different firms, and we have to choose a firm.
I'm helping if it, you know, if it's needed.
I didn't, um, I didn't send the email. Yeah, Mr. Mark, you're, you're on the email.
Mm-hmm.
It was sent out on Friday, September sixth.
Anyone else? Do you need only one or two or three? It would have to be three because you're already on it, okay.
Sure, and Mr. George Davis is on it as well.
Okay.
George Davis.
So that makes it four. So do you need an uneven number to vote to break a tie? Are you guys are just, you're just like?
Yeah, I think we just need.
Mr. LaBov, if you would serve, Renata, would you get with him about when the meeting is?
I'll call first thing in the morning.
Definitely.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes my report. Do you anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? All right, thank you. Uh, operational report, Mr. Baptiste?
Yeah, the only thing, uh, uh, anyway, if I recall, I think it's seventeen or eighteen, I have it on my desk, out of twenty-seven of them that we sent to train last year, it was sixty-nine percent of the people who have jobs. And what we have done, that's it, but what we have done, the other part of it, we have working with T W C because, to looking the wage records to see how much wages these people have and how much. This year, I think she said, no, uh, this year, I have it on my desk. I think it was about sixteen of them that we have put into class and about four of them completed. A lot of these people still in the project, process. But hopefully, uh, by next board meeting, we'll be able to give you how much one of these people earning. You know, sixty-nine percent of them, I think most, I would think that those completed have a license and making fifty-six thousand dollars a year. But T W C system should be able to tell us that. Uh, uh, that's the only thing she left me with. She had to leave her.
Sure, okay.
But I'm following up on the wages that you're asked for.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, the, the other thing, uh, Renata mentioned about these, uh, community, uh, meeting, uh, the third of October, now this week, the, the, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Be over at Saint Joseph.
Right.
At the, um, Hispanic community. Uh, and on the third, we're gonna be in your community, uh, at the community center. And on the twenty-fourth of October, we're gonna be over at the Vietnamese church. Uh, you know, I missed the last one, but went to the other, uh, one at, uh, church building. And, uh, had some very good questions, very good questions, you know.
I think you were able to, uh, to, uh, again, let people know what we do.
People just don't know.
Okay.
I think, I think this, figure, you know, like, you chose to.
Talk to the community and talk to the community and engage with the community. Uh, special meeting, I was trying to give a special meeting with the council to communicate about what you guys discussed today, the budget. Also, uh, we are working on, I think Miss Home was at one of our workshop on assessment and looking at going into what they call work keys. And in fact, uh, George is gonna be going to a seminar a couple of weeks from now on work keys and see. We're trying to make sure, how do we get our people ready for these jobs? You know, how do we make, do the assessment? And, and I think the end thing is, in fact, I was on the phone today with the guy, we're gonna try to make us pull off a, a work-ready community. And how we doing that is we engaging industry to become that partner so that when these people take these assessments, they go into this pipeline that is approved by industry and business, could be any business, where they would come from this pipeline and go get jobs.
Your mic, please? You're through now, right?
Yeah, everybody heard me, but, yeah. But, uh, George is supposed to be going to, going to A C T and, and getting really in-depth. I think Thursday, is it Thursday, Johnny, somebody coming for you? On that Thursday, if you guys wanna come by, check with Johnny what time. I have some folks that really operate this thing, Fortune five hundred companies that use this stuff. We're gonna be sitting down, you know, I've used it before, I know it works. You know, but using it for economic development is a little different. But what it does, Chris, I see your wide eyes, it assesses certain skill sets and it profile jobs. And based upon those certain skill sets, those same skill sets are required by those jobs and they should merge you. Tell you where you're at, if you're high or low on where you're and then we'll know whether where a person need to be upgraded. Right now, we don't, yeah. So we're getting real heavy to that. But anyway, I canceled the workshop on that. That's all I have. Oh, I forgot about this. What's her name, Rachel? Rachel out in training, two guys, George and Rachel both training. Financial. The last financial, you have the first sheet. If you look at 8.1, the eight months is the last real sales taxes we guys, the city received. If you look at it, this year, you guys have received Everybody seen what's, where I see 75%? That's what you got. You actually receive just about $5 million in sales tax. But an eight of that is going to the city. You gave the city $1,238,814.61. So that just show you, and my projection is, I think sales tax is going to go up about. And I'm going on the high side this time, 4% to 5% next year because there's that much activity going on around here. You know, so we're going to see a spiking in sales tax. On the other side, I basically showed you guys your financials. At the end, you see the last year, you see a lot of red that is where under budget. The blacks is the little bit of money we do have left. I feel confident that we have enough money in this budget to be okay. But got about $4 million, $4.6 million from this year's budget that you have not spent. I think that by time the end of the year, you're going to spend maybe about a million, three, and three million going to go into your fund balance. Okay? Any question on that?
A question. The 1.238 you gave to the city, is that for streets?
Yes, that's a proposition that went before the voters and that money goes, it's for street and maintenance.
Is that the one that was for three years?
That's for four years, okay? Was that four years? The street maintenance, yes, that's a full year.
Four year, so what year were you in?
This year, if you look at it, we started in 17, 18, 19. Next year is their last year.
And you won't have to give them any money left?
No, they would have to go back to the voters.
This time, we will move to closed our executive session pursuant to the following sections of Chapter 551. Section 551.071, section 551.072, to talk about land lease of Jade Avenue Business Park. Section 551.074, staffing. Section 551.087. This time, we'll recess to executive session. Professor Smith.
Here.
Kenneth Marks.
Here.
Dallas Smith. Ingrid Holmes.
Here.
Jerry LeBov.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Agenda Items 14, 15, and 16 were taken to executive session. Agenda Items 14 and 16, where the board was given a report on those two agenda items. And the staff has been asked to do some additional work on those two agenda items. Agenda Item Number 15 requires a vote to discuss for possible consideration of the renewal of our downtown affordable housing program, down payment assistance project. May I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on Agenda Item Number 15. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Is there any further business? There being none, may I ask for a motion for a German?
So moved.
It's been moved in second to adjourn the meeting. Have a great month.